And I'm controlling, right? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for July 12th, calling this meeting to order. Councilmember Mumm's having some technical difficulties, so she should be joining us. But in the meantime, Ms. Fister, would you call the roll?
Council President Biggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mumm.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and we have Mr. Piccolo here today, longtime veteran of city legal, who's going to fill the role of Mr. Ormsby, who is on leave this week. So, Mr. Piccolo, go for the advanced agenda. Mike Piccolo, can you hear us, or not? Okay.
No, I cannot hear you.
Okay. We're trying to figure that out, but... Oh, do you hear us now, Mike? All right. Can other people hear me? Okay. All right. Well, let's get started while he works on that. And we're going to start out with the consent agenda for July 19th. And the first one is an easement for a city sewer pipe across Fairchild Air Force Base. And Raylene is here to brief us on that.
Yes, thank you. This is for an easement of about 2,200 feet of city sewer pipe, which crosses the Fairchild Air Force Base, also source Fairchild. This will be good from September 1st of 2020 through August 30th of 2045.
Any questions for Raylene? All right. Next one, item two, is a contract extension with Dixon Resources Unlimited for parking consulting. And it looks like Justin Ray is here for that.
Yes, thank you for having me. This is a contract extension with Dixon Resources Unlimited for continued support implementing key strategies of the 2019 downtown parking study. It would, well, it would start August 1st, 2021, and end July 31st, 2022, and it's $107,400.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Hi, Justin, thanks. That's good information. It was my impression that study is mostly done, so I'm a little bit puzzled as to this large amount.
Oh, so there's strategies. And the original contract started out high and went lower for the amount of money that the consulting money, I would say. And so we did the SMCs and some RFPs. They've helped us with vendor relations, training, research, and their knowledge about industry and best practices. And then our next steps are the mobile payment RFP, setting up the LPR and our equipment rollout.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Justin? All right. Thank you. And, Mr. Piccolo, if you're ever hearing us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Well, we just finished item two on the July 19th consent agenda, so I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, so item number three is the...
We're... We can barely hear you, though.
Neither. How's that?
Well, that's better, but...
I'll try to get some technical assistance here in a minute.
Okay.
So, number three, Marsha Davis will present on the contract, item amendment number one with HDR.
Good afternoon. This contract amendment will add design and programming of program logic controllers at Springfield Lift Station and for CSO 26, and then some programming for CSO 24. The goal of this is that we're going to have coordination with the lift station and the rest of our SCADA system, and also between CSO 24 and 26. This will also add about six months to the completion of this contract.
I'm not seeing any questions.
Can you hear me better now?
A little better.
All right, we'll keep trying. So, item number four, renewal number one with Olin Corporation, and Mike Cannon will present.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. This is for renewal of number one of a contract for our hypochlorite from Olin Corporation. It is after-tax $332,668. It would start August 1st, 2021. It's in our current budget, and it is a must-have as per our permit for disinfection. Any questions on that? Did you hear me?
We did hear you. I see no questions.
Again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number five is the acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2020 Continuum of Care Program Grant Award, and Debbie Cato will present this.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, this is our COC Program Award from HUD for FY '20, which begins August 1 of 2021 and goes through July 31 of 2022, in the amount of $4,148,698. We're asking the council to accept this award and give CHHS permission to enter into contracts with our subrecipients once we receive all the appropriate documentation from HUD. Are there any questions?
Okay, no questions. Thank you, Debbie. Number six, ABC, presented by Margaret Instant, and they are coming from CHHS, requesting permission to amend and to extend certain agreements.
Yes, thank you. I am asking for permission on behalf of CHHS to extend several of our COVID shelter contracts, specifically for House of Charities, Hope House, the YWCA's Safe Shelter Program, and Women's Hearth. These extensions would continue funding for their COVID-19 prevention response efforts. I'm happy to take any questions.
Margaret, can you tell us where these funds are coming from? I'm assuming this is different than the item five Continuum of Care Program Grant Award.
Correct. This is through the Department of Commerce Emergency Solutions Grant Funding.
Okay, okay. And how long will... We could see the amounts of money, but how long will these... How long will this money last that you're contracting?
We're asking for extensions through June 2022.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Margaret? All right, I'm not seeing any.
Seven is the authorization to accept funding from the Washington Association of Police Chiefs, police sheriffs and chiefs. Mike McNabb will present that item.
I believe that's me. This is Mike McNabb. We got awarded a renewal of the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs to accept the sexual assault case review grant, also called the SAC3 grant. Our award was $200,000 for the fiscal year, basically covering '21, '22, a year from now. I think that's... This will cover salaries, benefits, training, victim advocacy with our subrecipient Lutheran Family Lutheran Community Services, and familial DNA testing.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. So, my question is, of course, we want to receive the grant, but after today, in hearing how low our officer staffing levels are, will we be able to execute on this grant as is written in the timeframe? Will we have staffing to do the work?
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's a great question. We currently do have a sergeant and detective doing this work currently. They're just going to continue doing this work. They have some collateral duties in addition to this work, so these aren't fully funded positions. They're mostly funded, depending on how much work they do on this particular type of work. It's a reimbursement-type model where they bill for their hours.
Any other questions for Major McNabb? Oh, sorry. Any other questions for Major McNabb? All right, thank you, Major.
Number eight is a contract renewal, ESO Solutions, and Jesse Patrick.
You're on mute, Chief Schaefer, if you were.
Thanks. I was just... Thanks for unmuting me. I was just mentioning, Mike, it's still really hard to hear you. But this item is for renewal of the Fire Department's Record Management System, which captures the mandated requirement for documentation on patient care reporting and on a variety of other services that we do, including fire reports, special circumstances reports, investigations, and so on. It's integrated in with our computer-aided dispatch and allows people in our department to actually enter data from the field, from their device, in lieu of the old way of returning to the station and doing it that way. We've had this contract for several years. It's been a successful venture with ESO, which is the owner of the company. Any questions?
I don't see any questions.
IT and One Air trying to help me on the speaker, so we'll move forward. Nine and 10 are placeholders for report of the mayor, and number 10 is reading minutes placeholder. Going down to the legislative agenda, the SBO, first one will be presented by Mike McNabb again.
Counsel, this is just basically the accompanying SBO to have the funding accepted and be able to spend it for the grant I just briefed. Any questions?
I don't see any.
Next item is the first reading ordinances, 36080, ending the Spokane Conference of Plans, guarding Spokane Downtown Plan, and Nathan Gwynne will present this item.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Piccolo and council members. Can you hear me okay? I have... I'm Nathan Gwynne from the Spokane City Planning Department, and I have a short presentation on this ordinance that I'd like to share. So, kind of getting into that, the Downtown Spokane Partnership is the co-sponsor with the city. We've been coordinating together during this process with the planning consultant team at Framework. And last May, the City Plan Commission recommended approval of the plan with modifications to add two new actions, one related to a centralized downtown police precinct and the other related to monitoring housing and shelter. And today, the council will consider a resolution listing several additional revisions to the draft plan, so that's going to be on the current agenda for today. And then that resolution was discussed previously at the council's study session on June 3rd, and then there'll be a first reading ordinance next Monday, on the 19th, followed by a public hearing and decision on the ordinance on July 26th. And the public can find a draft plan and related information that's posted on the city's project webpage. And so the Downtown Spokane is designated by the comprehensive plan as a growing and thriving regional center, and the downtown planning area is centered on the core of downtown, but also contains area on both sides of the river. And the Downtown Spokane, Spokane Downtown Plan is specific to this subarea and is adopted by city ordinance as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. This plan replaces the existing downtown plan adopted in 2008 and builds on the accomplishments since then. And the map here shows the relationship of two related subareas within downtown where planning has recently occurred and informed this process. These are the North Bank and South University District subareas. The new downtown plan boundary extends east to cover the entire south University District subarea, which is shown in blue, adopted by the city last year. The plan has several hot topics as part of priority, maybe the priority actions that the draft plan identifies. These include active transportation connections, energizing street life and bringing vitality and enhanced use to the streets that's accessible to everyone through a variety of strategies. Secondly, reducing impacts of surface parking, so addressing gaps in land use and design and pursuing redevelopment. Third, bringing arts and culture to the public realm, activating streetscape to support a cultural use and developing the updated and updating the arts plan. And fourth, strategies related to transit access and parking management, and these would improve the system through demand management and align the strategies, align with strategies in the 2019 downtown parking study. And then finally, programming and activating public spaces, so expanding the number of events and locations downtown. Looking at the public participation since the fall of 2019 for this plan, as a new subarea plan, the public participation included a public engagement plan, which was led by the consultant Framework, and the city and Downtown Spokane Partnership also formed a steering committee to help share and guide content over a series of meetings. In addition, three online surveys were conducted around the time of the public workshops and an additional virtual open house to present and receive feedback on the draft plan. And the results are posted on the project webpage. And of course, in addition, there were visits to community assembly, nearby neighborhood councils, and seven Plan Commission workshops, which were followed by the public hearing last month. So finally, we're looking forward to potential council revisions coming forward for consideration in a resolution at the meeting this evening, and that contains the 11 items in the draft resolution that relate to changes the council members have discussed to the plan, as well as a public hearing on July 26, two weeks from today, and then following that is a mayor's signature, 30 days. So, any questions? Thank you.
All right, let's see. Yeah, I'm not seeing any questions. You have really been on a long journey on this plan, so I'm really appreciating that you're getting it to the final moments on it, so thank you so much for that. And as you mentioned, based on our last study session on it, we suggested some slight changes, and Councilmember Kinnear was really kind of on the lead on that, and that's what the resolution today, this evening, does. And so we'll get to that. All right. Next item.
Yes, next item is H1, hearing item on Initiative 2021-2 hyphen 2 regarding the Cleaner Energy Protection Act initiative, and Terry Fister will report on this item.
Yes.
Oh.
At its meeting held Monday, June 21, 2021, the city council requested the validation of signatures on Initiative 2021-2 petitions. In order to be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 ballot, 3,477 validated signatures are required. A certificate with a breakdown of the validation process was received by the city clerk's office on June 29, 2021. The certificate reflects that the Spokane County Elections Office examined 6,110 signatures, of which 3,654 were valid. This constitutes 5.255% of the votes cast at the last general municipal election held November 5, 2019. Following the hearing next week pursuant to SMC 2.0, 2.100, and Section 82 of the city charter, the city council adopts a resolution to place the measure on the ballot at the next available election. I missed the agenda deadline for the resolution for the July 19th agenda, so that resolution will come forth on the July 26th instead, unless the council wishes to suspend the council rules to add it to the 19th. Are there any questions?
Not seeing any questions. All right.
The July 19th agenda.
Yes, and is there a motion to adopt the July 19th agenda as amended, or, excuse me, as read?
So moved.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's the agenda for now. Let's further change at next week's study session, our briefing session. All right, since we were on holiday, we now get to brief this evening's agenda. So why don't you get... Well, one thing, I'm going to go out of order. I see our friends from the airport are there, are here for... Mr. Crowder, is it just the one ordinance? The joint, the city joint-county resolution of 59, or are there other matters as well that you're here to testify on?
There are two items.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, both involving land sales.
All right. Well, let's start with 59, and then we'll pick up the other one.
First item, City Council President, and good afternoon, all council members.
Oh, I see.
Includes the sale of a 1.07 acre piece of property located at the corner of Geiger Boulevard and Flightline Boulevard that I had briefed committee previously on. This is necessary for the construction of interchange improvements by WashDOT related to the Geiger Boulevard interchange project with I-90. Property will be sold to WashDOT for its fair market value of $84,000. The FAA release process has been completed. Navigation easement will be included as part of the deed, and the airport will also be compensated separately for taking of the business park entry sign as well as impacts to landscaping. So, we would ask for council's support of the land sale and the amount of $84,000 to WashDOT. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on that one? All right. I see the other...
Thank you, Council President.
You can go on to... Looks like you have... I'm looking at two more resolutions similar.
I believe I only had one more, but I'm not sure how it's broken out. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Okay, one is parcels... Oh, parcel 25295.9050, 65 acres. Well, I guess there's two resolutions on here for both of those parcels.
So, it's all between parcel or... There's two of the same ones.
Very good. Okay, thank you. I'm... I'm zeroed in now. With the, with the briefing schedule and the holiday, we had not, we had not received city council action yet on the 65 acre sale of property to West Plains Development.
Okay.
So that would be the first resolution 0057.
Okay.
That piece of property, again, I had briefed to the Finance and Administration Committee, involves land at a surplus to the airport's needs north of Airport Drive inbound and west of Spotted Road, and just south of the land that council had approved for sale to WareTech. The purchase price for this property is $2,544,222 even. Any questions from council?
Questions? No?
Okay, thank you. The next item is an addendum to the PSA for the sale of the 65 acres. It adds 3.7 acres, and that land will be purchased for the same appraised value as the 65 acres, and therefore that adds $146,152.53. Any questions?
Any questions on that one? I'm not seeing any, so I think that.
And as always, Council President, these funds will be used to support the capital improvement program for the airports.
Yep, and I was just going to remind viewers that Spokane International Airport is owned jointly by the City of Spokane and Spokane County, and we never have to pay any money for it, but it is a part of our fiduciary duty to kind of approve these and oversee these things with Mr. Crowder and his team, so we always appreciate you bringing that information to us. There's, in my opinion, there's no need for you to come this evening. Again, you always can watch if you want, but I think that's all we need for right now. So with that, we'll excuse you and your team. I wanted to move, there's a, we had an email from Policy Director, Mr. McClatchy, about several agenda changes potentially this afternoon, and since we are going to have a long briefing session because we're doing two, two meetings, and we need to get the signup sheets on, I'd like to get that figured out next, and then we'll go back to the consent agenda items and work through those. So the first one, Mr. Gwen mentioned, it's a substitution of Resolution 2021 0054. As he mentioned, after our study session, we prepared with him a resolution that would make a few changes to the downtown plan, and then we got a memo from staff, just kind of generally, didn't really necessarily identify which staff members had concerns about it. So we then met again and adjusted that, and that is what the substitution is. It's just making a few more changes of language, pretty minor. But that resolution, so would then inform the final downtown plan that's going to be presented next week and the week following for a final vote. So I'm looking for a motion to substitute the version that was circulated today on the downtown plan.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, is there any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yep, so just clarification, what is the current draft that's on the table?
Sure. The current draft is an amendment to what was presented to us previously, and it's the one that's filed, it's on our, on our agenda tonight. So that's the one that's on, on the table if we don't substitute. And administration staff asked us to consider some other minor changes to that. That would be the substitute.
So it's not the version of the plan as approved by the planning commission? It's, it's the version as we proposed to amend the last time?
Correct. Well, that's, that's the one that's on the table, and then the substitution would be to make a few more changes to it based on administration requests.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Councilmember Stratton.
Okay, now I'm a little confused, so what we're talking about, the amendments, has that been approved by the planning commission, the amendments that we're making?
No. No. It's, so they made their recommendation, we proposed some small amendments to it, and it doesn't, if I understand, Mr. Gwen can talk, as long as it doesn't make major changes or cover new areas that were never done, that's appropriate. We don't have to just up or down the planning commission, we can amend it, so, but, so, yeah, so they have not, so we did not send it back to them because they weren't material enough changes to send back to them. Councilmember Wilkerson.
So just clarity, is this resolution 0054?
Yes. And it's, the, the current resolution is posted on our website, Council Agenda, and then the substitute, which made a few changes at the request of the administration, was circulated today, I believe. Okay. Okay, I am, I am corrected, the substitute is on the official agenda? So the one that it's substituting is no longer on the official agenda? Is that on our?
Well, I don't know. If the old one still exists. I think it would be best to just accept a motion to substitute because of the changes. The initial version was provided to council, but the most recent version that we received is in the packets for today.
Yeah, that's the motion that's on the table. I just, I was telling people that the one that they could look at was the old one, and that is not the case, so I was incorrect.
So moved to accept the substitution.
Okay, I think we had the motion and the second, so we had that. Any other discussion? All right. All right, all those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Can you raise your hand if you were a nay, so I could see? I thought I heard two. Okay, so that's five to two. Any abstentions? All right, it's substituted. Let me, okay, all right, I'm going to go down to the bottom of Mr. McClatchy's email because it is also a substitution, as opposed to suspending the rules, which we'll get to in a moment. This proposed substitution is for what was originally filed as emergency ordinance C36077, having to do with adjusting the current code on emergency weather centers and also homelessness, sheltering capacity in general. Councilmember Kinnear led the effort to split the language of those into two ordinances. And so what I'm looking for is a motion to substitute the part of the previous ordinance with some adjustments for the full ordinance 36077. So it would essentially be kind of half of the topics of that, and then the other half of the topics potentially would be filed as a separate ordinance, but it would be substituting Councilmember Kinnear's language for the existing language currently. And again, I believe that was circulated to everybody.
Moved to approve.
Okay. Then moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions about that? Councilmember Wilkerson.
I, I really appreciate councilmembers' approach to this, but in separating these two, I don't see where that gets us any closer or puts us any further behind than what we're trying to accomplish. Separation really addresses data, and that has been our biggest obstacle, and to get the correct information to make the best decisions, and we have not had that. So I will not support this because I don't know how it will be any different in the next couple of weeks than where we are right now.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Sorry, my mute button's not working. What, what we're trying to do is separate these two issues. We're dealing with an emergency right now that is heat, making sure that vulnerable populations have a place to go, and the unhoused have a place to go. The second piece of this, which is about data, needs to be taken separately because it's a separate issue. We're not as concerned about what the data is for getting people out of the weather as we are with actually sheltering them because they are unhoused. I don't want to confuse the two. And I also wanted to give the administration time to weigh in on the second piece because they said they did not have enough time to evaluate that. So this is a compromise for them, to give them time, but also to not conflate and confuse these two issues, because at the core, we are in an emergency right now. It's 97 degrees plus outside, and people do not have air conditioning. We lost lives last week, and this is an emergency right now. To conflate the two means that we're not doing service to what is before us at the moment.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
I just got to push back a little bit because we're serving many of the same people, so waiting for them. We're talking about many of the same people. I guess that's where my challenge is, in really trying to split the two. So we're trying to split the same people to do two different pots, and it's really the same pot, who we're, the vulnerable, yes, but many of them are the same ones who are out there unhoused and who are homeless.
That's, that's true. Sorry, Council President, if I could. That is true. My aim was to include the vulnerable population that so far has been overlooked in this entire conversation. Those are the, those are the ones who died last week, the people who were housed without air conditioning, and they didn't have a place to go or didn't know where to go, and we don't have a plan in place, haven't had one for as long as I've been working at City Hall from 2008. So it's way past due, and it is about everybody, not just the unhoused population. And I'm try, that's what I'm trying to do, is separate that conversation and say, we're all in this together. If you don't have air conditioning, if you're not in a place where you're safe, it doesn't matter whether you're housed or unhoused, you need to have that protection.
Other comments, questions about, and again, just the only issue is whether to substitute Councilmember Kinnear's version for the existing version, with the understanding that the balance of the former version with some, with some amendments, to clarify some language, will get filed as an emergency ordinance tomorrow for consideration on the 26th. Okay, all those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? About one, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. All right.
Council President?
Yes. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I, I, I would like to make a motion that we substitute Section 2A, and this would apply to 1, 2, and 3, the currently unsheltered homeless individuals, and I would add, as identified in the most recent point in time count. My, my concern with this is that it is incredibly subjective without a specific number for us to target. So I would make a motion that we be very specific and objective, at least to the best we can be, by using the point in time count as a source of information, source of data.
Councilmember Kinnear.
So Councilmember Cathcart, I'm really confused. Are we talking about the emergency ordinance?
We're talking about the, the cooling center ordinance.
And so, how, I'm, I'm a little confused as to how the unsheltered population, how are you going to measure the people who are sheltered who need help?
Well, we have a 2020 count that gives us a specific number.
No, I'm talking about.
We can use that number at our most.
The sheltered people, the sheltered people, the people who have to.
Well, this would be for the, yeah, this would be for the unsheltered portion.
How's that going to change the dynamic at all? I'm not clear.
Well, because right now, we're just making a, a number. We don't have a specific number that we have to actually create space for.
We wouldn't have a specific number regardless, because we don't know how many sheltered people would need help.
So how do we ever meet the definition of this ordinance? If we, if we have no number?
That is why we have an emergency director whose job it is to flesh this out and make it work. That is what she does, and so she will have a plan built around this ordinance so that we can go forward. So that, I don't see that as our job to be that specific. That is the administration's job to do that. Every other city manages to do that, so I'm confident that she could do that.
Yeah, I, I don't hear, for a second, so I won't trail it on, but not everybody has air conditioning.
Councilmember Cathcart, I, I'd be happy to talk with you between this meeting and the legislative session on that. There might be some language. I mean, you're obviously free to make your motion now, but it, there may be some language that can get closer.
Well, it's, it's, it's died for lack of a second anyway, so.
Okay. All right, well, we can still talk about it, but anyway, okay. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I, just one more comment. I just want to echo the confusion over Councilmember Cathcart's motion, because we are all lacking good information on making decisions for the people we serve. And that's where we're struggling with so much of this going on. So the first emergency ordinance does put in place some data capturing information, how to support providers for that, and so I think that is a part that we just can't change away from.
All right. I, I may have lost track, but I think we approved the substitution of the version, right? So, okay. Then, Mr. McClatchy, I'm going to need a little help from you on a couple of other things that are potentially would be adding to the agenda or revising a prior resolution on the ARP. So could you address the other items that you mentioned in your email to folks and kind of set them out, what those are?
I think I can do that, Council President. So the first item, let me pull up the correct list here. So the, the first item on the list that you haven't addressed so far is an amendment to the ARP framework resolution to make sure that the city council can move forward with the ultimate funding requests without having to go through the normal procurement process and go through fitting. As you probably know, there is a provision in the municipal code that allows the city council to declare by resolution that an emergency exists, and as such is waiving, can waive public, the normal public bidding and procurement process. The idea behind this resolution is that after the process is completed with the council working group and the collaborative work with the administration and public outreach to determine the funding priorities, that there will have been sufficient understanding of the need, not only for the funding, but for the efficient and quick distribution. of the need, not only for the funding, but for the efficient and quick distribution of the funds. So the idea is to waive the ARP funding decisions from the normal procurement process. So that's the ARP resolution amendment.
Before you go on, is that to a resolution we already passed, or is that a resolution that's pending right now?
That amends a resolution by which the council adopted the framework for making considerations and making decisions on the ARP funding requests.
Okay.
So it's amending an existing resolution.
Okay. But is the, and is that filed as a new resolution amending the old resolution? I guess that's my question, I guess. I'm trying to.
Correct.
Okay.
Would need to be added by a suspension of the rules.
Okay, so we'd be adding that resolution if the rules are suspended for tonight?
Correct.
Looking for tonight? Are you looking for, as proposed, is that to be proposed, to be added to tonight's legislative agenda? That's my question.
Only if there's another, I don't believe there's another ARP funding proposal on the agenda, so it could be added for the 26th, which is when there is another ARP funding request for staffing that will land on your agenda.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to be, could be added to the agenda tonight.
Okay. Okay. And then, so that's that one. What's the next one?
The next one is a resolution which encourages the administration to take part in the recent grant opening, Notice of Funds Availability for the Rapid Housing Capital Acquisition Program. I think this is something that the Department of Commerce staffers were going to be speaking with the council at its study session the other day, but they didn't get a chance to because we canceled the study session. But this is essentially a 30-day period in which cities and nonprofits and other housing providers may apply for funds to rapidly purchase and repurpose hotels, motels, other types of housing sources to provide for a rapid increase in emergency housing. So this resolution simply asks the administration to either play a part with matching funds or to be a lead or a co-lead applicant with a housing provider to meet that Notice of Funds Availability.
Okay.
Obviously, you'd like to add it. If you wanted to add it, I would like, you probably would want to give the administration ample time. As I said, this is only open for 30 days.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just wondering, why has the administration opposed applying for this so far?
The one thing that we heard on the legislative call the other day wasn't necessarily opposition, but was simply the statement that applying for funds appears to be operational in nature. So that's why this resolution encourages the administration to do that.
And there's only, it's like the 30 days, is that correct? Is that what you said?
Yeah, it opened on July 9th, and I believe it closes on August 5th.
Okay, that's a really short.
Yeah, so if I understand it, it's a resolution setting city policy to apply for it, but it's not, it's not an ordinance or law that forces anyone to, but just makes it clear that the city has that policy priority. And the mayor and I both signed on to a letter of other mayors of cities requesting that the state provide these funds for this exact purpose. We signed on to that several weeks ago, so it seems like consistent with what the administration has said, but as we also know, they are short-staffed, so this would just make a very public statement that it would be the city's policy to get these funds while they're available and purchase these essentially vacant hotels and motels and turn them into housing. They'd be operated not by the city, but by nonprofits, so. Other questions on this one? Okay, and then you have one more, Mr. McClatchy. I say you have it, but mainly just because you're explaining it.
Right, thank you. So. Yeah, it was on the email from me, that's true. The final one is a special budget ordinance to use some of the ARP funds to make sure that there is staffing for victim advocates for the COPS program. And this is, let me look at my document here. This is specifically authorized under the ARP to make sure that people have access to services such as community violence intervention programs. So with the rise, the rationale being with the rise of child abuse and domestic violence, as well as an increase in economic crimes such as fraud, these victim advocates are necessary.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So, Mr. McClatchy, with that being said, would it not be in our best interest then to look at the ARP framework that was just presented two comments ago to approve that so that could follow suit? Otherwise, it seems like we're out of order of how we're allocating the funds. That's just me.
That's correct. I think you're right. I agree with you.
Okay. So I would just add too that I don't think I was very clear in the committee meeting. The COPS program usually applies for a grant that covers those two positions from the state. The state changed their process and unfortunately did not get information back to some of the municipalities about those changes. So when the COPS applied for that grant, they were too late. So part of this concern is that we have these victim advocates who are all, there's only two of them, and they've been all over the place during COVID, working many hours, helping neighborhoods and helping residents who have been caught up in fraud, and there's been an increase in domestic violence in some of these neighborhoods. So that's been the issue. What COPS was trying to do was to, they can keep these positions funded on their own until the end of July, and at that point, they don't have the funds to continue the positions. So that's why we felt that it was an emergency. They're also being called on to, now that things are opening up, to do more graffiti abatement and that kind of thing. So that's the reason that I rushed it, thinking we need to get this taken care of before the end of July, because those positions are so important and they need to be funded. Brian, did I say that right?
Absolutely, and I think the direct tie, as I mentioned before, is because of the increase in domestic violence and the increase in child abuse, particularly in lower-income communities, is a specific call-out from the ARP Act to help people find and access those services, which is exactly what the victims' advocates do.
Yeah, they even, it was in all the papers, but they spend a lot of time with victims, even going to court with them to make sure that they understand proceedings, that they understand what paperwork to fill out. They're two really big jobs, and so I'm just trying to get them funded so they can continue that work, plus the additional work coming from the opening of the community code.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Boy, I'm chatty today. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So, Councilmember Stratton, I'm just trying to make sure we have the right process in place to accomplish what we're trying to do with COPS. So if we move on the ARP framework, then that would give us a structure to be able to work with COPS or some other organization that may come before us that really impacts our community. So that's just what I'm trying to get clarity on, which is going to come first, chicken or the egg here?
Right. I understand, I'm just saying this is to meet a clear emergency, so whatever we can do collectively to get this moving and get this organization the resources they need to continue their work, I would be most grateful, and I'm sure they would be as well.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering what the legal reason is that we would have to go out to bid for this. I mean, COPS is a service that we've funded in the past, and this is simply just expansion of the funding, I guess is how I see it. So I'm just wondering what the legal mechanism is that we would actually have to go out to bid for these positions?
Well, it would either be, I don't mind if I could take that. There's all kinds of different methods for competitive procurement. It doesn't necessarily have to be bid. It could be an RFP or an RFI. The resolution, though, would simply say, look, based on the municipal code section that allows council to do this in responses to emergency situations, we're going to waive the public procurement for these types of procurements, because we will have gone through another process that allows us to have public engagement and a full understanding of who the potential vendors are, our funding source, and our process for making sure we're in compliance with federal law. So we're sort of substituting another process for this by way of waiving public procurement of any kind, whether it's a smaller type of procurement or the full-blown bid, competitive bid. Does that respond?
So Brian, you mentioned there would still be a public engagement process. What process is that, that these people go through?
Well, I'm hoping that the public engagement temporary employee that's going to be helping the working group and its collaboration with the administration will be able to work with Lisa Gardner and with the administration to reach out to people about their needs and their recommendations for the ARP program overall. So that's, and of course, we do need to publicize those sort of requirements and the request to people to ask them, what is it that's needed in their community? So I think that is the outreach portion of it.
And I guess one other thing to address Councilmember Wilkerson's concern that we're kind of rushing this into the ARP when we haven't quite gotten that public engagement, we could do this, just take it out of general fund reserves for now, and then go through the ARP process and decide whether or not it's an ARP thing, and then reimburse the general reserves. So that's another potential option, I think, but.
Sounds good.
But I don't know. What do you think about that, Mr. McClatchy or Councilmember Stratton?
I am okay with that as well. I just know that this is important, and we need to work towards getting this, getting them moving forward and secure knowing they have those positions.
Councilmember Mum.
How much is it?
$270,000 over two years.
City Council, this is your CFO, Tanya Wallace, and I would respectfully request that we take this and review it properly to make sure we go through all the proper channels and do not make a misstep on this, either in the use of ARP or that we miss a step in any type of procurement process. We understand this is very important to the council and to the city as a whole, and I am positive we can find the right path forward to do it in a very expeditious way, but we do need just a little more than a couple business days to work through those details.
Can I comment on that?
Of course.
And I respect your comments, but it's my understanding that city council has reached out at least four times to set up some meetings to, of this group, to talk about this process, and that has not happened. So I have to say that I'm frustrated. I'm a little disappointed that we've been working on this, trying to get some help to an organization that has done a lot of great work during COVID. We have many people, many organizations out in this community that need to be made whole or need assistance from these funds, and I don't understand why there isn't, we haven't even had a meeting. The team hasn't even had a meeting. So I guess I would just say that if we don't do something soon, you may find more council members like myself just willing to set it out there and move forward, because we have organizations that need help. And I can't be guaranteed, nor can COPS be guaranteed, that this isn't going to languish for three months down the road.
And Council President, Councilmember Stratton, I can completely and utterly respect that. Part of the frustration overall is also on the final rule and that we don't have the final outcomes from the U.S. Treasury on the guidelines that guide us in the spending of this, of these dollars. The final comment period ends this Friday on July 16th. After that, they will come out with their final comments. Many organizations nationally have provided comments in so they can be as expeditious as possible in giving us those guidelines. But this is not like the CARES dollars that we could push out quickly and effect, just super efficiently, because we had a very short timeline. We have three and a half years to spend this. So there are different rules in place, almost exactly like any other federal grant dollars. There will be strings and reporting requirements attached to this. There will be single audits attached to this. So we do need to be very careful at how we walk through this. And so what we're waiting on, before we have a meeting, before we can have a productive meeting, is that final guidelines from the U.S. Treasury on how to proceed and know what the process is going to look like for each category of spend, because it is different for each category of spend. And we want to make sure that we're giving you all the information necessary to make the best and well-informed decision. We just don't have all the information from the federal government at this time to share with you.
Tanya, this is Brian.
I just have a question, Tanya. So how are other cities doing this? Are other cities way back, or it doesn't feel like we're moving forward very fast. What about other cities?
Council President, Councilmember Stratton, to my knowledge, we're actually still further ahead than most other cities. A lot of other cities are taking our similar approach in trying to determine what the process is, and they have started, first of all, by setting up evaluation teams that will evaluate every request for funding. We're not even quite there yet, but we're very close.
But, Tanya, Brian, given that we've got an urgency for this need that is kind of independent of the ARP, so the idea of simply using our excess general fund reserves right now to fund this right now and then doing the analysis later about whether we can reimburse the general fund for it, is there an issue with doing that?
I have two concerns, and so I would ask for some time to look at this. One, ARP dollars cannot be used to replace reserves, so we'd have to be careful of how we proceed in that matter. Secondarily, the COPS contract, we would want to look at the COPS contract to see what we already contract with them to provide. This is not a service that we have contracted with them in the past, so it may be a little more than extending their contract or expanding their contract. But I don't honestly know at this point, until we look at that contract and see if it is an expansion that we can go on. If it is a completely new service that we would be contracting with them to provide, then that does open it up to the RFP process. So there are just a couple checks that we need to do first.
But if we.
So that's why I'm just asking if we could have a little bit of time to really review and brainstorm and bring a solution to you for this matter.
And can you get that done by next Monday night? If we go the general reserve route and we say that there's an emergency so that we don't have to go through the typical RFP procurement process?
Council President, I will do what I can, but I will let you know one way or the other by Friday what we can do.
Okay, so, anyway, we've heard that comment as well. Thank you. All right, that, kind of having a legislative session-type discussion on a couple of these things, but we do need to get our agenda straightened up again so that people can sign up to testify. we do need to get our agenda straightened up again so that people can sign up to testify if they want. So there are three matters that have been requested to add to this agenda. And before we do that, though, the rules would have to be suspended, and then we would vote on each one of them individually. So my question is, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. It takes five votes to suspend the rules, and I sort of implied this, but I'll just say that the motion is for adjusting or adding items to our agenda. Any further discussion about the motion to suspend the rules? All right, seeing those, all those in favor of suspending the rules for purposes of adding items to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, the rules are suspended. I'm going to go to the Resolution to Encourage the Administration to Apply for Matching Funds for Rapid Capital Housing, Resolution 2021-0061. Is there a motion to add that to this evening's agenda?
I'll move second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, 0061 is added to the agenda as a resolution. The next one is Resolution 0060, which is a resolution that would amend a previous resolution and allow us to remove public bidding requirements for ARP funding because we have another process to accomplish something similar. And Councilmember McClatchy, I don't know if you have an opinion about whether that-
I don't think he's a council member yet.
Oh, sorry. I wouldn't want to do that to you, especially this summer. Policy Director McClatchy, do you have a recommendation on whether that be considered tonight or next Monday?
I think either one would be appropriate, but bear in mind that the ARP staffing SPO has been filed for the 26th.
Oh.
So sometime between now and then. It might be a good idea to have it done early so that you could just have that as a part of your framework going forward.
Okay.
I'll move to per-
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adding Resolution 0060 to our legislative agenda on July 19th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, two nays. And any abstentions? All right, that is going on next week's agenda. And then that brings us to the Special Budget Ordinance Regarding COPs, 36081. And-
Council President?
Yes.
Can I move to table that to next Friday?
Well-
I think that was the date she said she would have some kind of responses or answers for us.
Well, I think my preference would be if you made a motion to add that ordinance, 36081, Special Budget Ordinance, to next Monday's meeting, the 19th, and then by-
Oh, okay.
And then by Friday, we would know kind of what we, which road we were going, either ARP, general fund, or something else. So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adding 36081 to our legislative agenda as a special budget ordinance for July 19th, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions?
Nay.
Okay, that is major agenda work. So now we'll continue with briefing. Mr. Piccolo, if you're still there, you can take over.
I am, man. Can you hear me any better?
Yes, much better.
All right. IT gets credit for that.
Okay.
Right, on the consent agenda, the first item is setting a hearing for the cleaner energy protection initiative that Terry Pfister briefed earlier on. Terry, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, that's it. No, I have nothing to add.
Okay. That takes us to the second item, a consulting contract with HDR, and Marcia Davis will brief this one.
Good afternoon, Council. The contract with HDR is for future flows. It's the contract that they will be calculating the future flows for both water and sewer for our 20-year planning efforts. And as part of that effort, they will look at both what our existing uses will be and ways that we can reduce our water uses to conservation. Any questions?
I see no questions. So number three is a four-year value blanket order with Neptune Technology, and Steve Burns will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me here. The Water Department is asking for the renewal of a four-year value blanket order with Neptune for the purchase of our meters, water meters, registers, and the parts for a metering program, and the estimated cost annually is $2.3 million.
I see no questions.
I have one quick, I have one quick question for you, Steve. So I know you're going to be giving us a presentation on the real-time wireless meters coming up, but I'm just, I want to make it clear, this is a blanket so that we don't, if we accelerate the funding for the much better meters, we don't have to buy these. This is just what we do in case we need one. Is that, am I understanding that?
No, well, this is a continuation of our 10-year rollout of the smart meter program.
Oh, okay.
This is exactly what that is.
Okay.
And there are some, there's some funding questions that we have to go through at this point, but this is a first step in the process.
Okay, so it is the smart meters. All right, great, thanks. Okay, continue on.
Number four is a low bid for La Riviera, and Dan Boda will brief that item.
Good afternoon. Item four is proposed low bid contract for the Hoffman Well Rehabilitation Project with La Riviera of Rastam, Idaho, for approximately $2.4 million, to which we propose to set aside 10% administrative reserve. This project modifies the existing well casing and installs a new well pump and associated electrical at both well number one and number two, bringing both wells into service for the first time in several years. The low bid from La Riviera was approximately $228,000 or about 8.7%. Under the engineer's estimate, three other bids were received. This project is locally funded.
I see no questions. Next, Dan. So number five is the contract with Shamrock Paving, and Steve Burns will address that matter.
Hello, again. The Water Department is asking for the approval of a contract with Shamrock Paving for on-call paving services on an as-needs basis, not to exceed $250,000 annually.
Thank you, Steve, and I see no question. Number six is a contract addendum with Rural Steel Tanks, and Dustin Bender will address this item.
Good afternoon, Council. The department is seeking approval to, for an addendum for our contract with Rural Steel for an additional $200,000 for this year, which will allow us to purchase the necessary steel containers and inventory that we'll need in place by January 1 to service the new commercial customers that we will assume from the West Plains Annexation.
All right, I see no questions. So Dustin, you have the next one as well with Big Belly Solar LLC.
Yes, this, we're seeking approval to lease 12 additional Big Belly solar units, which will be recycling and refused, so two station units that will be placed in 12 additional locations in downtown, in the downtown core. These were identified as being kind of high-pressure areas for litter and waste and recycling by Downtown Partnership as well as, as well as the department. That will add, that will add approximately, shoot, I don't have my notes. It'll be, it'll add 20, gosh, sorry about that, $26,352 per year, and then a one-time expenditure with shipping and installation of $9,251.
Thank you, Dustin. Number eight is a contract with Asset Works LLC, and Rick Giddings will present this item.
Good afternoon, Council. Fleet Services and Solid Waste are seeking approval of a contract with Asset Works to update instrumentation control units at the Broadway, Route Two, and Wash site. The site uses a variety of ICUs to communicate vehicle information to the city's fleet management app, city's fleet management application. These ICUs are currently running on a Windows XP platform, which is outdated and no longer supported by Asset Works. This is a planned hardware upgrade for 2021. Total cost for the project is $107,989, including sales tax, which will be allocated between Solid Waste in the amount of $39,343 and Fleet Services at $68,646, based on the shared management of the site. Upgrades will be completed by vendor staff from Asset Works to ensure smooth implementation.
Okay, Rick, you have nine A and B as well, two master contracts.
Okay, Fleet Services and Solid Waste, again, are seeking approval for two contracts, one with industrial welding and another with MFG Precision, or miscellaneous welding, fabrication, and machine shop services. Our intent is to have multiple choices for these services in order to help us avoid inundating a single supplier, which will reduce downtime for vehicle and container repairs. These will both be five-year master contracts reviewed annually. Anticipated spending with industrial welding is not to exceed $250,000 per year, and our estimate for MFG Precision is less than $150,000 per year.
All right. Any questions? All right, thanks, Rick. Number 10 is a multifamily property tax exemption, and Ally Brass will present this item.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I just have one contract for you today. I'm going to share my screen. Oh, let's see here. Can you see my screen? Mike, I see you nodding your head. Okay, so we just have one conditional contract for you today. It's for the Imperial Apartments, which is the conversion of the old Days Inn Hotel downtown between Second and Third Avenue. The structures actually are on both sides of the alley there that run between Brown and McClellan. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing hotel into 92 studio apartments. They are intending just the eight-year exemption, but they did indicate rental rates of between $900 and $1100 a month. So this is in the Riverside neighborhood downtown. Any questions?
Ally, just a question for you. I had a constituent reach out and was asking about there's a commercial component to this, and just in terms of the property tax exemption, is that just subtracted out of the equation? Is that how that works?
Yes. If, if there's a commercial component to any of the buildings, the commercial component would not receive the tax exemption. It would only apply to the residential portion of the building.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Thanks, Ally.
Just a quick question. So those rental rates, those are, those are market rates pretty much?
Yes, the applicant, so the two options are either the eight-year or the 12-year exemption. If they go for the 12-year, then 20% of the units would need to be set aside for households at or below 115% AMI, and then they would only be allowed to charge 30% of that household's income in rent. They did not express interest in meeting those requirements or going for the 12-year exemption, so they are just going for the eight-year, which would be market rate units.
So this is a discussion we've had about tax exemption on properties in the market that we're in, that they, the owners are benefiting, and does that really trickle down to the people that we are trying to help? Yes, we need housing. That's a given. But do they need tax exemptions to build in this current market? And I know that's a conversation that I know we need to really have.
Councilmember Burke, I just see your hand.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. I just wanted to thank you for your comments. I've been saying this for about four years now, that we need to look into this multifamily tax exemption to change the percentages that we are able to give tax exemptions to. While building housing is really great, the people coming to Spokane are people who are able to buy these places or rent these places with cash. They're coming from Seattle and California, and it is, what it's doing is it's pushing our people in poverty out of the city limits because they're not, they're going to be no longer able to afford anything in the city limits. And that's because we're not focused on building affordable housing. And so if we don't add this component to the, to the puzzle that we're trying to create, we will fail and not have a successful city in the future. And so I'm glad I've got Councilwoman Wilkerson on my, on my side. Thank you for saying that.
And I was just going to add, the legislature made some changes in the multifamily housing property tax exemption laws, and we're waiting for some rulemaking on that from Department of Commerce. But once we get that, I'm looking forward to a robust conversation and considerations of changes in the MFTE and in all aspects of it, including the zones that we're using of it. So that's coming up. And also, Councilmember Burke asked me if we could take item 10, that item separately, so we'll be doing that.
Okay. Number 11 is a recommendation for a local history property registration, and Megan Duval will present this item.
Good afternoon, Council. And I will share my screen, and I know you guys have had a marathon session, so I'll try to go quick. Share. Okay, so you've seen this before. Spokane Register of Historic Places is our local program for identifying historic properties. It does require the consent of the owner for listing. It's voluntary. And it is, there's a management agreement, which is what you're looking at today, a contract between the city and the property owner to look at changes to the property in the future. And this is also how we offer incentives to property owners in the future. In order to be eligible, properties generally have to be 50 years of age or older. They have to meet one of the criteria that's laid out in our ordinance. We can have buildings, sites, districts, structures, or objects listed on the Spokane Register. And here's the categories. So category A, it has to be associated with broad patterns of Spokane's history. Category B has to be a relation to important people to Spokane. Category C is our architecture category. Category D is prehistory or archaeology. And then category E is our cultural heritage. So that brings us to the property that we're looking at today. Built in 1906, the architecturally significant Hunter Broderick House at 529 West Cleveland Street is a well-preserved craft- craftsman-style bungalow. The house is located on the southeast corner of Howard and Cleveland, one black south of Corbin Park. The Corbin Park Historic District includes 88 properties that surround the park and was listed on the Spokane Register as well as the National Register in 1992. The Hunter Broderick House meets Spokane Register of Historic Places under category C as a property that embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type and period of construction. It's an excellent example of an early type, or an early craftsman bungalow that retains very good integrity on both the exterior and the interior. The one and a half story house has features that are typical of the type, including a moderately pitched roof, full width front porch, extended rafter ends and knee brackets. It also has special features that make the house stand out. These include stylish three-part windows at the second level facing both Cleveland and Howard Street frontages and shaped rafter ends, a clinker brick chimney and square bays with shed roofs. On the interior, the basalt rock fireplace in the living room and box beams on the ceilings are distinctive. The house features a central straight-run stair with unusual heavy chain balustrades supported by heavy posts and a front parlor that's reminiscent of the earlier Victorian era, as is the arrangement of other rooms on the first floor. The main floor also includes what was called the Crystal Room by the previous occupants and was described as a place where the family gathered to listen to the radio and is now a music room. Another distinctive feature is the fact that many of the light fixtures are still original. The second floor features three bedrooms and a bathroom. The house was built by a well-known and prolific builder, James A. Hunter, who built many attractive homes in the Corbin Park neighborhood in the first part of the 20th century. Hunter and his family were the first residents of the house from its construction in 1906 until it was sold into the Cook family in 1913. The Cooks were the future Mrs. Broderick's brother and sister-in-law, and the house was quickly purchased by the Brodericks in 1914. May Broderick died in the flu epidemic of 1918, and her three daughters were cared for by Dr. Broderick's widow's sister, her name was Lottie Ford, who moved into the home with her son Jack and her parents after emigrating from Canada in 1919. Dr. Broderick remarried in 1923, but took an apartment at the Avonita Apartments with his new wife and Lottie, continued on at the home, raising the girls and her son, as well as caring for her parents. Dr. Broderick also died of the flu in 1927. Lottie sold the house after the death of her father in 1940. The Clark family purchased the home and remained there until 1975. Several owners followed, but in 1990, the Mandevilles purchased the house and have been there for 31 years. And I just wanted to point out the fact that I just, this is the sweetest story because the Mandevilles have lived there for over 30 years at this point. They're not looking for special tax valuation or any other incentive. They literally are just doing this as a stewardship thing. They just like, they just love the house so much that they want to see it protected for the future. Those are, those are rare. The Hunter Broderick House retains excellent integrity and original location, design materials, workmanship, and association. It was recommended for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, of Historic Places by the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission on June 16 of 2021. And that is my show. I'm going to stop sharing my screen with you. Ken. There we go. Sorry.
All right, any questions? Megan. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Item number 12 is a contract with Cochran Inc. and Mike Sloan will present this item.
Good afternoon, city council. Item number 12 is request for your approval for a contract with Cochran Incorporated for the installation of the low voltage cabling for the new field engineering location. It's the move of the field engineers into building that's in the water department there on foothills. And it's the low voltage wiring for internet and phone service. This is done through an RFP selection and the contract was awarded, to be awarded would be $59,717.52. Seeking your approval. Any questions? Good, thank you.
Thanks Mike. Item 13 is reported to the mayor for pending claims. Item 14 is the city council meeting minutes. That brings us to item 15, which I'm not sure if the council has already voted on this item to be added, but it's the purchase of two U.S. equipment trucks. And Tom Williams will present this.
Do we have anyone from fire still here? And we haven't added it yet, but once we get a presentation. I'm not seeing any fire. I do recall from talking to Chief Schaefer that there's an opportunity to purchase these off-road vehicles for firefighting and at a really good price and quickly. It's very hard to get vehicles and their current ones are very old and needing replacement. But Councilmember Keneer, Public Safety Chair, could tell us some about it as well.
Yeah, thank you. And the current ones are 20 years old. We're in an extreme fire situation right now. So these might make the difference between neighborhoods going up in flames or not. So they're, they're important to what we're faced with right now and the extreme fire danger we're in. So I would hope that we would fund this for him.
Is there a motion to add it to tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding OPR 2021 0466, brush trucks to the agenda for consent, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that brings us to the end of the consent agenda. Ms. Fister, if you would like to read everything except item 10, which we'll take separately, we can vote.
Okay. Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, set hearing before city council for Monday, July 19, 2021. Unvalidated initiative 2021-2 petitions filed on behalf of Jennifer Thomas petitioner regarding charter amendment adopting the Spokane Cleaner Energy Protection Act. Number two, consulting contract with HDR Incorporated to provide future flows forecast to determine future capital facility need for the update of the water system plan beginning June 21, 2021 and ending December 31, 2021. $230,000 deferred from June 14, 2021 agenda. Number three, four-year value blanket order renewal with Neptune Technology Group Tall Asse, Alabama for Neptune water meters, registers, and parts. Estimated cost of $2,300,000 including tax. Number four, low bid of La Riviera Incorporated, Roethrum, Idaho for Hoffman well rehabilitation. $2,407,635 plus tax. An administrative reserve of $240,763.50 plus tax, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. VMS Neighborhood. Number five, contract with Shamrock Paving Incorporated, Spokane, Washington for on-call paving services on an as-needed basis, not to exceed $250,000 annually excluding tax. Item number six, contract addendum with Rural Steel Tanks Incorporated, Caldwell, Idaho to purchase additional metal refuse and recycling containers for the West Plains annexation. Estimated expenditure $200,000 including tax. Number seven, contract amendment with Big Belly Solar LLC, Needham, Massachusetts to lease an additional 12 receptacles in the downtown area. Annual estimated expenditure is $26,352 with a one-time fee of $9,251 plus tax. Number eight, contract with Asset Works LLC, Wayne, Pennsylvania for hardware updates to the Broadway Fuel Wash Facility to upgrade ICUs that are running and out, on outdated Windows platform. This technology investment is necessary to ensure full functionality of the facility in the future. $107,988.87 including tax. Number nine, master contracts with A Industrial Welding Company Incorporated, Spokane, Washington for on-call miscellaneous welding fabrication services to include hydraulic cylinder repair and machine shop service as needed from September 1, 2021 through July 31, 2026. Annual estimated cost $250,000 including tax. B MFG Positions, Spokane, Washington for on-call miscellaneous welding fabrication services to include hydraulic cylinder repair and machine shop services as needed from September 1, 2021 through July 31, 2026. Annual estimated cost $150,000 including tax. Item number 10 will be considered separately. Item number 11, recommendation to list the Hunter Broderick House, 529 West Cleveland Avenue on the Spokane Register of Historic Places. Number 12, contract with Concrete Incorporated for installation of low voltage cabling for new field engineering location. $59,717.52 including tax. Number 13, report to the mayor of pending eight claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through June 25, 2021. Total $7,729,439.26 with Parks and Library claims approved of their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $4,353,747.28. B claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through June 26, 2021. Total $7,266,977.45 with Parks and Library claims approved of their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $5,693,118.52. C payroll claims of previously approved obligations through June 26, 2021. $7,644,872.26. Number 14, city council meeting minutes for June 21 and June 28, 2021. Number 15, purchase from True North emergency equipment of two new brush trucks for the fire department. $130,000 per vehicle plus tax.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, noting that item 10 is being taken separately, indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is adopted as read. If you could read item number 10 for a vote.
Number 10, multiple family housing property tax exemption agreement with the Imperial Apartments LLC for the conversion of an existing motel into 92 studio apartments at 120 West Third Avenue. Parcel numbers 35191.1215 and .1216.
All those in favor of this item indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. I think that's four to three. It passes. All right, that's the end of the consent agenda. We still have more briefing, but I wanted to get that done till we get to the briefing. So let's continue, Mr. Piccolo. You're going to, Mr. Ormsby is going to owe you big time.
Yes, I'll be sending you an email here.
Yeah.
We have a number of SBOs. File two, it will handle the first two, involving the Engineering Services Department staffing and a project along Clark Avenue.
Good afternoon, council members. Ordinance C36070 is SBO we briefed at the Five Committee late last month, which transfers $350,000 in salary savings to move it into the budget for the construction management office relocation. This is principally to cover the sale tax burden of the project, as well as some SOC costs, and also to add in some gutter and socket replacement and code of pain. Any questions on the first SBO? The second ordinance, C36071, is an appropriation of $200,000 of the contingency reserves to go to the engineering department for the work related to the Clark Avenue landslide. To date, the engineering departmental budget has covered the costs so far, which has included the geo, technical investigation work, the tree removal, our ongoing surveying, and the minimal design levels to date, as well as the dirt buttress at the base of the wall, which has been resisting the movement of the slide since early spring. Any questions related to the second SBO?
You, you might have answered this at committee, but I don't recall. Is there any chance that we can get FEMA reimbursement for part of those funds?
Yes, there is a chance. And we're working with Sarah Nuss to make sure that these are all included. So we will be applying for it. We don't know if we will get it.
Okay, thanks.
The next SBO is 36072 regarding the stormwater and sewer maintenance fund, and Verlene Jeanette will brief this item.
Yes, this is, um, this is, this SBO is, was briefed at the Finance Committee. This will reclassify a vacant city engineer position, create two positions, including an education coordinator and a clerk. Any questions? Thank you.
Next SBO is 36073. I'm not sure if Howard Delaney is still on the line. This matter involves transferring funding to fill a probation officer two position in response to increased demand for electronic monitoring program. Next SBO is 36074 involving community and economic development funding, and Chris Becker will brief this item.
Thank you, Mike. This SBO is to use salary savings from the vacant community and economic development director position to pay for the recruiting services, the recruiting firm that we're using to fill that position.
Okay. No questions. Next one is 36075 involving asset management capital funds. And I believe Tanya Wallace, you're going to cover this one for Paul and Josie?
Yes, I am. Council members, this one is a budget appropriation increase of $410,067 funded from the Normandy complex sales proceeds. And it will be, $330,067 is used for crime prevention through environmental design or SEPTET, and then $80,000 is intended for art and cultural capital investments. So this just simply establishes that appropriation and the projects will be coming forward to you for approval for use of this dollars. But this puts the budget in place for that. Any questions?
Thank you, Tanya. Next one is 36076 involving code enforcement operation costs, and Chris Becker again will brief this one.
Thank you. This SBO is to use $500,000 of unappropriated reserves to create 10 temporary positions in the code enforcement department. That will be used to expand services for unlawful camp abatement, graffiti abatement, litter control, and downtown maintenance. It will pay for the positions, equipment, materials, and the increase in disposal fees.
There are no questions. Thank you, Chris. Then 36081 is the SBO on the cops victim advocacy program that the council added to your agenda. That takes us to the emergency ordinances. The two that I have listed, 36077, 36078, council president will be presenting those two items. I think the council has already reviewed them before.
I think, um, I'm going to maybe defer to Councilmember Keneer on 077 and just, I mean, maybe just a couple sentences. We've talked about it a little bit today, but just of the new substitute ordinance for that.
And essentially, listening to the community about their concerns and conflating the two ordinances as they were initially written, and knowing that we are in the midst of heat wave right now and probably going through the summer off and on, we have an obligation to protect not just the unhoused, but the people who are housed and do not have air conditioning or appropriate way to stay safe. And I was also mentioned that we had 20 people die in the last heat wave, and many of those people were housed. We are a mid-sized city. We don't have an overarching plan. We never have had. And this is an opportunity, we have Sarah Nuss, who's with us now, extremely competent. She knows exactly what to do. This is our opportunity to engage her, let her do what she does best, come up with a plan, so that going forward, no matter whether it's heat or a windstorm or cooling, whatever it is, the plan is the same. People know where to go. So it has to be part of a, a communication plan, opening up spaces, churches, community centers, whatever it is, so that everybody knows, this is where I go when it, when this happens. And it's overarching. It's been in the books. We just haven't refined it to this level. So I'm hopeful that, and we have community support, so I'm hopeful that we can get this passed so that people are no longer in danger and have a place to go when they can't cool off themselves.
Thank you. And then the next one is moratorium for consideration of impact fee exemptions in our PDAs. We've briefed this previously. We've briefed this previously, that we have a formula, City Legal asked us to come up with an objective formula for awarding impact fee waivers that need to be, they go to the benefit of the developer in the PDAs, but they have to be paid out of the general fund. And we worked with the executive directors of the Northeast PDA and the West Plains PDA. But in order to, and we have this, this ordinance is already there, but in order to get it passed, we need to pass this moratorium so that people can't be applying under the old system, which was inadequate, until we get the new system in place. So the idea is to get this done, literally in the next few weeks to a month, so that we can roll out those funds to the two PDAs to be used in a targeted manner for city goals on creating jobs and sustainability.
Okay. That brings us to our resolution. First one is 2021-54 regarding the draft downtown plan that Nathan Gwynn, I believe, had spoken on earlier, but is there anything to add to it?
I think we've briefed that sufficiently, so.
Okay. And then 2021-55 is the sale of surplus property, and Dave Steele will present it.
Good afternoon, Council President, councilmembers. We have two parcels on our surplus list at this time. Both of these are in the northeast district of Spokane, kind of that area. We've got East Dalton and East Wabash. These are properties we picked up in the county as tax abatement. We have numerous liens and other charges against them, so the recommendation out of the Real Estate Review Committee was to surplus them and then list them with a local agent for best market price. The one is only a partial lot, so it kind of makes sense that we'll probably get an offer from the joint property owner. The other is a valuable lot, so it should be fairly attractive in today's market.
Sweet Vacation and Ellen Brown will brief this item.
Good afternoon, council. We're just setting the hearing for the vacation of Linton and West Streets between Clark and Riverside. I'll see if I can pull up a map here for you. This area is Linton Streets just west of Riverside, and West Streets between Riverside and roughly Clark Avenue down in Peaceful Valley. We do not have any city utilities in that area, and there are not any utilities that I'm aware of. So the applicant would like to consolidate property for development purposes. This would be an at-cost vacation, and we've calculated a fee of roughly $68,000 for the cost of vacating this. We do not really have any other conditions as far as this vacation, so be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
With no questions, that brings us to the three resolutions that the airport has already briefed, 56, 57, I'm sorry, 57, 58, and 59. And then this, the last two remaining resolutions that the council added on, 2021-60 on the removal of public bidding requirements, and 2021-61 on the Rapid Capital Housing Grant Funding.
All right.
I believe that completes our agenda under two hours.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's legislative agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right. That's approved, and as you've discovered, we have quite a long agenda tonight, so fuel up. We'll see you back at 6:00, and until then, we're adjourned.